Is that right? Yep, okay. So I'll call to order the ordinance subcommittee meeting of Tuesday, September 10th, 5:15. We'll call it counted for. Um, I don't think there's anybody here from the public. Where's the net?
I know.
What the heck?
I feel lonely.
Uh-huh. Um, and I did, I saw that there was minutes, but I didn't have a chance to go through them. My computer is having some technical issues.
I have deferred to trying to be, uh, more summarizing and defer to the fact that we have video.
That's true.
So I don't have to s-
He basically went, uh, here's the meeting, here's who attended, and we adjourn.
Okay.
Yeah.
I summarized what we discussed and, you know, if you wanted to see more, you can watch the video. Yeah, that's true. So. Um, I'm not opposed to, you know, approving those ones if-
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of August 27th.
Uh, second.
Okay, all those big?
Hi.
Okay, there we go.
Uh, motion to approve-
Are you abstaining?
Yes.
Who's the-
For now.
Tuesday, uh, October 17th, is this?
On my-
Hey.
What's up?
Always good to see you.
Okay.
Okay, so let's, um, do you have any news for us, I guess is the question?
Yeah, so, uh, okay, it's, yeah, well, yeah, so, uh, so we're still work, so in no specific order. So wage staff, um, by permission of the mayor, have been sent out to the carpenters because we're just trying- So basically, there's a couple of issues with it that we're just trying to, um, kind of, uh, needen up. So one is that there was one part where basically there is a conflict, uh, do you have the annotated?
Yeah.
And I can try to find it because you have the annotations. So basically, there was one part where it creates a potential conflict. I mean, I have it on my computer. Um, it created, there's a potential conflict created where it appears that the, the council would be giving the mayor directive to do something which they can't necessarily do.
Right.
So, um, uh, because of separation of legislative and executive power.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so I think that we'd agree that that probably could be easily changed just by changing the language.
Okay.
Um, I, I have to look at the exact part. If, um-
Probably has to do with like, uh, the way that the bid is-
Yeah, it had to do with negotiating contracts. I think it was something like that. And then there were parts about that were basically looked like this, that we were, um, creating a, a local investigation process, which was not my intention, and that gets complicated. So I think the plan would be to potentially take that out and just to continue to create framework that creates, uh, more of a robust process for reporting to the AG.
Okay.
If someone wants to bring a complaint forward. There was also some language in there all the way at the end, Counselor Coniff, about, uh, the ten taxpayer thing, which we're gonna remove. It just makes it very easy to, for people to bring complaints forward. We're gonna take that out.
Right.
So basically, uh, that, I said, it's in the hands of the, uh, carpenters union lawyers so they can clean up some of that stuff.
Okay.
Uh, because as rapidly learned, even if I, if we put in language that I think sounds good, if it's not, you know, appropriately used, um, then it's not going to fly. The other thing, and I think, um, Counselor Coniff had mentioned this, which was a great idea, was that, um, where we will, instead of repeating language that occurs in both sections, we'll refer to the language that's repeated in the TIF, the TIF section as ad language. Because if we repeat the language in somewhere where it says like, "May," and then the other one says "shall," or just as an example-
Right.
-that creates problems legally.
Sure. Well, and also tightens it up a little bit.
It tightens it up. So that's, so that's, that's the current plan. Um-
So we should be expecting to see that probably-
After the next meeting.
After our next meeting.
So, yeah.
So that we won't have a public-
Well, yeah.
So I'll continue the public hearing again?
Yeah, yeah. And then like, so the cannabis stuff is interesting. So where we're at with that basically is that by including, by seeking, by seeking actually to be more equitable, ironic enough, um-
Exclusionary.
Yes. So that by including some of the supplier, often supplier diversity categories, potentially, especially when it comes to issues of race, i.e. minority categories, um, that potentially creates a conflict where you're, where you're basically discriminating.
Okay.
So, there's a couple of options there. So, and then I'll, I'll back up too. This is completely uncharted legal territory.
Mm-hmm.
So there's no good case law. And so while there are some constitutional law issues that arise, basically what the solicitor said to me was that we have to just basically consider what the risk is. And, you know, when you're the first to do anything, there's always gonna be risk. Um, so, oh.
Just to, um, Somerville did something similar. Do we know how they maneuvered around this?
Yep, so Somer, so, so this, this goes to what I was about to say. So Somerville only included, and this is an option we have, which could potentially be a little bit more airtight, is we could just say, well, we'll just include the state directives, which is, um, the economic empowerment and equity program graduates. And I think Somerville also included a, uh, resident option, which they told, the solicitor also told me potentially-
Could be.
Is a can of worms, but it's not as much of a can of worms as the, as some of the minority things. But I spoke with the CCC yesterday, and they said that they felt that a lot of the, uh, spirit of including some of those supplier diversity categories, uh, that was, that was in the spirit of what they were considering. And so they were gonna try to get a memo to us that basically, basically gives some, uh, kind of brings us under the umbrella of state directive, who concluded those. So I'm waiting for that. I should hear back by the end of the week about that.
Interesting. Okay.
Yeah. So I think that makes that a little bit, you know, gives that a little bit more, uh, that makes that a little bit more airtight. And then the other thing that they said to me, which I think we had already included, or he put in his, um, uh, he put in his edits, and I think the new solicitor's fantastic, by the way. He said if we, if we make it so that you can't, if we, basically if we make it so that special permits, you have to reapply for a special permit to sell business. He said that also gives you more, makes it a little bit more airtight as opposed to it just turning over.
Right.
Which I think makes sense.
That does make sense, yeah.
Um, commented on a bunch of things that we already, that weren't part of our amendment, so that wasn't necessarily- And then there were some, there were some definitions, I think. So, um, but that's where we are with that.
Okay. And so if we don't get the memo from the CCC, are we, like, do we wanna consider doing a similar path as Somerville as, you know, adding a, a local, uh, resident piece, but then deferring to the state categories?
I think that's the safest thing to do, unfortunately, because we could always add it later.
Yeah.
But, uh, yeah, yeah. I mean, I think it's still in the spirit of what we're trying to do and consider, and, and, and when I spoke with the CCC, they said that generally, most of the people in the, um, economic empowerment, some of the people that fall into economic empowerment category and equity category are basically a lot of the people that were intending to kind of serve with this.
Mm-hmm.
So it kind of is, is the same thing.
Right.
Um, it's more so minorities. It's not as much women. Um, so-
And is it just, is it the process? Is that, like, is their process difficult? Is that why they've graduated so few people? Or were they having trouble vetting people or like, because isn't, if I remember correctly, there was, one of the reasons why we didn't just do that straight was because it didn't seem like a lot of people were coming out of that program.
My impression was that, so a couple of things. One is it wasn't open very long, so they reopened it.
Right, okay.
And then the other thing is that I think that a lot of people looked at it and they're like, great, well, where am I gonna apply? Because there's no, there's no provisions like this to basically, like, create a pathway for people to be able to go through the economic empowerment process and then have basically something available to them that's not gonna get snatched up by some multi-state corporation.
Right.
So, and that was the feedback I got also from talking to the CCC. So I think the safest thing to do if we can't get some sort of state guidance is that, and I think that's, I think that's good. I mean, it's better, it's, you know, I think we drafted a very broad document, but I think that still, given people who have been completely disempowered and marginalized by the, you know, the war on cannabis, um, and, you know, with the areas of disproportionate economic impact, I think that's, I think that's a great step.
Yeah.
I mean, so, the, what do you guys think?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think it'll, it'll be interesting to see what the CCC says and, and how that'll impact it. Um, but if not, and, you know, I'm not opposed to using the CCC's categories and adding a resident, um, piece to that.
Yeah.
And, um-
I mean theoretically-
A resident rapper or a resident-
Well, it's, uh, it's sort of like a-
Or in addition to.
In addition to.
In addition to, yeah. And if that's the case, theoretically, we could just amend, we can amend it to strike those-
The categories.
Those categories. I'd have to look at, double check those, some of the, there might still be, I have to look over again what some of his, um, uh, grammar edits for, for lack of a better term, if those were in the amendment section, because he, he took the whole, our whole ordinance.
I noticed that. He has some comments on like, 10 dot 1.
Yeah.
Oh, interesting.
Starting through, he's got some changes. Some of them are just capitalization and-
Sure, but, but if we, I mean, that's actually, um, we have, since we still have that on our agenda, we could actually go through and we could fix that if we, if we felt so inclined.
Fix the whole thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because it's, it's still on our agenda.
Yeah.
You know, and if, I mean, if those, um, make sense, then, you know, maybe what we should do is just, uh, I mean, we'd have to probably, we'd set a separate public hearing.
Yes.
But it would just be, um, a public hearing for edits.
Yeah, so I recommend, yeah, I would recommend to, to, uh, consider a vote on the actual equity section and then, and then a separate thing for the edits around it. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah. If I remember correctly, the only sticky part was what is a resident, I think. I have to look at that. And I think he said that our definition of a resident is different than the state's. So if we just basically include the state's definition. So, I mean, theoretically, next meeting, if we don't get guidance from the state, we could introduce amendments to strike the supplier diversity categories, change our definition of a resident. I think that would be it. I can look over more of the document. It's gonna be more complicated than that than-
Well, and I think if we're, and if we are gonna do that, we, um, which I'm fine with, I think we need to make sure that we get, uh, like, the completed version to Barbara by beforehand. I think that was one of the things that she was asking for.
All right, so the problem is, yeah, so I won't, probably won't hear from the, from the commission until Friday. So then that might mean that that's a no-go.
Right. So then it would just delay it a week, or two weeks.
Again, I'd rather do it right, and I apologize that we're kind of in this purgatory, but-
Well, it happens sometimes.
Better to be right.
Yeah, better to be right then.
Best.
Than in permanent purgatory.
Yes.
So, I'm just, only because I can't find it really quick, but when we originally drafted this, did we draft a provision, equity notwithstanding, to add additional licenses, kind of like liquor licenses? Like, if we five years from now deem that this is becoming the pot capital of the world and we need more licenses, do we come back as a group, update this to whatever number we decide and then follow it that way?
That's all we have to do.
Okay.
All we, all we have to do is, is go, is-
So if, from an equity perspective then, whether we go with eight, I mean, whatever that number is, is movable.
Yes. Yeah, and that was the intention with, and the intention too is that as you add on, they have to be equity until you reach 50/50.
Okay.
Um, that reminds me of something else. Remember the whole clause about if someone applies but doesn't make it to a certain part of the process that they can come back and say, ask for an extension, basically?
Yeah.
So we set that at six months, and I think that's a really short period of time.
That's what I, initially, that's what I had, was saying, was I felt that that was too short.
I think-
When we were, I think that, so that was one of the discussions we have with the planning board.
Right.
And, um, I, I, I thought that six months was pretty quick, but, um, I think Jeff and Jesse were more like, well, if they're doing it, then, um, you know, they'll be on top of it, but-
Yeah.
Like, if we, if we, if that's something we wanna change, that's something we can take a look at.
We don't have to send that back to the planning board, right?
No.
I think, I think a year is better personally.
That's, originally, that's what my thought was, that it was-
Um, and then I have to look at the, I apologize, I have to look, well, I'd have to pull up the document, tell you more. Um, I think those are the big things, but I have a feeling that, um, yeah, I don't, I'd have to find that document now. I don't know where I put it. Oh wait, maybe, uh, this might be it. Um, okay, I have it in front of me. Yeah, the six months, I think he suggested.
Section.
7.4.3.
Sections. Oh, never, I got it.
And then he also mentioned that there were new, there are extension, that we probably would have to then outline more of a process for that other than like, hey, I want an extension.
So if any special permit granted to an equity application shall lapse, if a completed application with the cannabis control is not obtained within the six months of filing, a special permit with city clerk, a request for renewals or extensions must be submitted prior to the expiration date. So, um, uh, maybe, I mean, maybe we could say something like, a request for renewal or extension must be submitted in writing to the city clerk, um, you know, like, so just add a little bit of that to give it a little bit more specificity. Um, I don't know if we necessarily have to have a form. I mean, I think if they're just asking for an extension, saying, hey, we haven't been able to get our completed application with the CCC.
So Barbara clears these today?
That was my question, because it was another question that the solicitor asked, right? Doesn't it go to the planning? Doesn't it goes right to the-
Well, I think it would go-
I can't imagine Barb doing-
No, she wouldn't. No, 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 but I think it would go, it would be submitted to her and then put, to go to the planning board.
So special permits are filed with the city clerk that get redirected to the planning board? Because that's the way it reads.
Right.
Yeah, and that was his question.
That you can just walk in and go, Barb, I'd like to have a special permit for him.
Right, no, 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 that's not how it works.
Her head is gonna spin off its after-
Doesn't it go, doesn't it, does it go to the planner?
It goes to the planner.
Right.
Right, so that, right, so we have to change that.
Yeah.
Planning on that.
I, I was just thinking that it was like, that she was the conduit and would stamp it. So we had the date stamped.
Well, here's another question. Do we say something, you mentioned a form. Do we say on a form to be provided by the city? Because that way, instead of like, everyone writing their own essay, we have like a form that says, request for extension or renewal.
I think that-
And it has very specific categories or something.
That would have to go back probably to Jeff, as far as like what he would wanna see on that form, other than, you know, who they are, what they want an extension for, and, and, you know, the time that they think that they need.
But couldn't you technically pass this and then, then go back and write the form?
You could, um, you could, but I think that Jeff would wanna have it.
Oh yeah, of course.
Would wanna be the one that is creating that form.
Oh, yeah, no, I agree.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's what I'm saying, is that that way, like, everyone who requests an extension is, is, is filling out this kind of like-
But maybe we should, maybe we should ask Jeff if, um, if that's something he feels is necessary and he wants to do.
Yeah.
Um-
Because if the, if the form is still, you know, unsure if we even need it.
Right.
Since Jeff's gonna get them.
Or otherwise, just, they, they can otherwise just kind of outline, you know, the reason.
Yeah, the reason and, and the date that they-
Yeah, so I think that was the big thing.
Okay.
Um, I'm just, I'm just looking back here again. Sorry, I'm just looking at, um- Yeah, some of this was, um, some of it, as you probably saw, was just, um, a lot of, um, again, like, legal language edits that he added in.
Okay.
Um, which I think would be reasonable to, would be reasonable to adjust. Maybe, um, you know, maybe the best thing with this is to kind of wait for that document, then type back up, um, you know, all these edits.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then, um, then I forget to at the next meeting.
Yep. That sounds fair.
So this also will be continued?
Yeah.
Again, the third time.
Well, the one thing I have to say is like, I'm actually thrilled that like, we, the solicitor is so rigorous with his-
Oh, yeah.
Analysis.
Yeah, this is-
Really good.
And I also spoke with Ryan, that works, Ryan O'Donnell, that works for him, he's fabulous. So-
I feel like I know that.
He used to run for something, did he? Did he run for something in, in, uh?
Oh, you have me thinking of JD.
No, I was, I'm thinking of Ryan O'Donnell.
Yeah. Was he a city councillor?
Yeah.
Oh, that, yeah, but that's, he, he's the president, current president of North Tampa City, different person.
Oh, okay.
It's different.
Yeah, and it might not even be, it might be Ryan O'Connell for all I know. I don't think it's Ryan, anyways, but yes.
Yeah, interesting.
Okay, got it.
So why don't I do that then, um, and wait for that document? That might be the best thing.
Sounds good.
Yeah. But we're close.
Okay.
So-
That brings us to the bike?
It brings us to the bike, and I'm, I thought that, um, I thought that Word printed out the final version with all the edits I made, and it didn't. It printed out the version with, uh, the edits I made and then the things that I deleted as well. So, uh-
So it's, it's later than this one with all the-
It's, yeah, so I, so it basically went back, so I could, I could tell you what I did. Uh, I apologize. I didn't, I printed these out before I left work, and then I just am looking at them now, and there's like, reek, like, there's language that was taken out and then the language that was put in. Um, but I could tell you, there's, none, none of these are substantial edits. What they are is just cleaned up a lot of things.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, let me find that.
Can you, on your form, um, there's a misspelling right out of the gate, unless you've changed it? Or unless they change it?
Yeah, let me know.
Oh, yeah.
Did I forget something? Come on.
The two or three low-speed electrical bike.
Okay.
And it says two, oh, that's very different than what he had. So you, so you incorporated-
I can give you this, but it's basically gibberish because I-
So you incorporated his?
Yeah, so he basic, here's what he said. He's like, if you're, he said, if you're gonna use, if you're, in general, you, you wanna use language that's basically the same as language that already exists. Like, anytime you, you create your own language, that creates problems and it can make it, like, challengeable.
Yeah.
Yeah. So like, if we, if you were to be like, uh, a low-speed electric bicycle is a voter of less than 850 watts. So why, why are you using a definition that's not in line with federal or state? So we had a, we had a discussion about that. So, um, so, um, so that, so basically I took, I like, just didn't, I copied, literally copied the, all the existing definitions from the one, from the, from the, like, reference points that we had.
Okay.
Um, and, uh, um, like, things where it's, it's in GL, like, I just referenced that chapter GL, so it's spelling the whole thing out, like, motor vehicle definition, which is like, this long.
Yeah, but then if they change it, we don't have to change it.
Right. Um, and I, I, so, I, I, I literally cleaned, just cleaned up all the language. He had a few little edits, so you guys have both of those. He had a few little edits, like, where we had the restrictions. Instead of like, making it like, a little bit more convoluted about what's permitted, he just had an exceptions part at the end, which is F.
Okay.
So where it says, despite otherwise being prohibited by this ordinance, uh, one of vehicles use, uh, despite otherwise being, like, oh, yeah, despite otherwise being prohibited by this ordinance, vehicles using mobility aids, blah, 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 public safety, official vehicles may utilize man, man hand rail trail. So he just kind of cleaned up how we were trying to explain that.
Okay. And it, uh, okay, so official vehicles. All right, good.
Did you wanna see it?
Um, and then there was that part that we put in, but I, I wasn't sure if the way I wrote it down was exactly right. So the permitting part, I wrote commerce use sole function is dependent on the use of the man hand rail trail is prohibited unless specified elsewhere. Is that what we wanted to say?
I think that is what-
Whatever you had in the minutes.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that what I had in the minutes is what we actually discussed.
So, look at the video.
Uh, the other point he made regarding undefined vehicles is that he basically said, well, you can take a vote to say, well, this can be allowed, but it's temporary in, in the sense that we would have to then go and, and codify that ordinance.
Create, yeah, create some-
Like a stage for an event?
Or, or like, or like, yeah, or like if someone-
Had a bike taxi?
Had a bike taxi, we don't have any provisions, and we took a vote so we can, we can allow them. It's temporary until we, you know, and we probably would have to, you know, at that time to make some parameters and, yeah. So that, that was, and again, just legal, legally, it's like, we can't just vote it, vote it and say, oh, it's fine. Like, we'd have to go back and put into language.
Yeah.
Um, so that's what it was. I mean, I could send you, I can email you the document. I don't know why it printed out everything. So I can email you guys the document. Um, and then if you're, and if you're okay with it, I can send it to Barbara Thursday. I mean, but it's, it really is just cleaned up language that we had already agreed on, and using his recommendations for things. And I didn't, I did not change anything that we had discussed.
Okay.
Although I think he was confused about the width restriction, because I think he thought that only pertained to electric bikes, and we, our intention was that, that it could pertain to anything, any vehicle.
Any vehicle.
Yeah.
Besides, um, like, official vehicles.
Right, exactly.
Tandem trailer or something, going on the bike path, probably wouldn't be good.
Yeah, probably not.
But, but if we're saying motorized vehicles, wouldn't that include? Because we're only limiting the width on a electric bicycle. We're not limiting the width on, of course, it's already prohibited. Any other kind of motorized vehicle. Bike, the low-speed electric bike exceeding, so, oh, okay, only exceeding that.
I think it's anything, I think is the width restriction. Like, even a bicycle, like, if you had a bicycle that was like, like, if you strapped like a two-by-four onto your bike and went riding down the bike path, like-
Right. You have one bike on the end and another bike on the other.
Right, yeah.
Stapped on.
But that's not how we have it written. We have it written, low-speed electric bicycles of any kind exceeding 4.5.
That's what he put in there. Oh, wait, sorry.
No, he just took out the word vehicles.
Oh. No, I think he added, that's his addition.
No, read the notes, over here. He said, um, he said, since motor vehicles and vehicles are already prohibited, I think you only need to exclude excessively large electric bicycles.
Right, but that wasn't our intention. It was to exclude everything, right?
Excessively large bicycles. Or, yeah, excessively large.
Let me look at an earlier version, because I, I saw that, I was like, I think he added that in.
Well, because when I, no, because we, we wrote the, remember?
We said, low-speed electric bicycles of any- Why did he cross that vehicle?
No, we put it in as restrictions. So, because remember, this is what we wrote.
Yeah.
So we wrote it in as 17.3 restrictions. Um, no vehicle, so it's under B. No vehicle may exceed 4.5 feet of width as measured from the widest part, no vehicle may extend, exceed 15 feet in length as measured from tip to tail, excluding public safety, emergency vehicles, and official vehicles used for trail maintenance. So that, that is a different-
That was, I, I think he added that language in, because I think he misunderstood.
And he excluded our public safety and emergency vehicles because that's an exception.
Correct.
Um, so what he did is, he took out the word vehicles.
He took out the word vehicles and added electric bicycles.
No.
Because our, our prior language just said, vehicles exceeding four and a half feet of width.
No vehicle exceeding.
Yeah.
So he added the low-speed electric bicycles of any kind.
Well, he must have, he must have like seen it as low-speed electric bicycles and figured that these were the restrictions for low-speed electric bicycle, bicycles, and these were just our restrictions.
Yeah, yes, I think that's what he was, yes, yeah, yes.
So.
Yeah.
So you, we're gonna change it back to vehicles of any kind exceeding 4.5 feet.
Yep.
Yeah, yes.
And 15 feet from tip to tail.
Tip to tail.
Got it.
Okay.
I was thinking about it the other day as I was watching people drive down the bike path in their cars, and I was like, huh, are those official vehicles? But-
Food trucks.
But yeah, I mean, I guess they are, right?
What vehicles?
Um, for all the food trucks and vendors for-
Oh, that's how they get-
They, they drive, like, Vinny Crisella-
Technically, we could take it.
Probably could, probably could.
We need money on any given day, we would say, take it, that's good. We would lose who's food truck Friday, which is a bigger draw, but you know.
Well, no, I mean, yeah, so.
Not gonna.
That's not, that's, I think it's fine.
Okay.
So I can send you, I don't know what it did with this track changes, so I have to figure out how to like, accept everything and make it a part of- So I can send you, I don't know what it did with this track changes, so I have to figure out how to like accept everything and make it final.
Yeah, I mean, if you can send that and then-
Start from his email or the email you sent me.
Uh, but I-
That has this version on it.
But I, but I took that and made it and like edited everything.
So you've, you've made more changes?
No, I just, I accepted some of his and cleaned it all up.
Oh.
Like I just accepted his-
Some you did, some you didn't.
Uh, pretty much everything I did, like-
Right, so the one in the email that you sent me.
Okay.
You could just take it and then accept.
Uh, yeah, I think I could do that.
Except for this one.
And then go through and do whatever edits you can.
Seventeen point three feet.
Yeah, well, and that's what I basically did. That's what I have, but I don't know why I printed everything else out. Like, like this is basically a mix of-
A mix of everything?
I'm confused why I did that, but again, yeah.
Alright, so this is still a potential.
This is potential that we could, we could actually have the hearing on this.
Well, that's what I'm, yeah, that's what I'm hoping.
If we can get it to Barbara by Thursday.
So the question is, I mean-
No, we can't. We don't have it, do we? We don't have it scheduled.
Well, we can schedule it today.
Oh, I didn't schedule it because-
We don't have it for a public hearing, so we have to schedule it.
I have to schedule it again, that's right, because Barbara wanted to have the language.
That's right, okay, so-
So let's get the language to Barbara and then I'll schedule the public hearing.
So I can send it to you guys and you can say this looks good.
Yeah.
Right?
Yep.
Okay, okay.
And then-
And then we set at the next meeting. That's right, that's what we talked about. Okay, so there's no, okay. So theoretically Barbara doesn't need, wouldn't need the, the language then?
She, she, she'll wanna have a copy of it when I set the public hearing.
So, what is it, October fifth is the next public, would be the next opportunity for a public hearing?
October, yeah, hold on.
That's not right.
Let me check. Uh, so our next meeting is seventeenth next week, and so then it would be October first.
Okay, so, what day is today? The eleventh, so.
Tomorrow's the eleventh.
Um, tomorrow's the eleventh. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry, the second.
The eighteenth, you'd set the public hearing.
I'm thinking today is Wednesday.
And she needs two, she needs two weeks in her house?
I think she wants it before-
For October one.
Yeah.
For October what?
For October second.
So does that mean I can give it to her on the night, she could, she needs it by the nineteenth?
Um, I think that if we give it to her-
Read her email again. I just wanna make sure I'm not missing something.
I think she just wants it so people can re-
But I could give it to her Thursday, yeah, okay.
Yeah, but as soon as we have it, we can just-
Just remind that all revised ordinance should be given to me in time to inclusion in September. I got it, okay. All right, so I'll send you guys the, the edits, which is really just basically taking what you recommended minus a few things that I think you very misunderstood.
Okay.
And, um, then I can send it to her Thursday. I'll send it to you later tonight.
Yep.
Perfect.
Okay. And it's, uh, it's- Nope, we wanna end with that?
I have questions.
Please, questions.
So, on our agenda, we still have review of the proposed mobile multi-passenger pedal tavern. We removed that last time, so we just need to make sure that that is taken off our next agenda.
Okay, I had the same question.
I think that was just a, whoops.
Yeah.
Um, we also have, and I noticed on Omar's, uh, agenda for public safety, he also had off-street parking as an item.
That's the one that you submitted to public safety.
So that's a different, is that what that one is?
Yeah.
It's about just parking limits at time, okay.
What was that? Oh, that was the one hour thing we wanted to, yeah.
Okay, um, so that's what that is. Ours is still live. Um, we just did that. So what about, why do we have commercial quad drying, quadricycle ordinance on ours when it's also on public safety?
Um, well, because ours is the one that we wrote.
Will we kill him that now?
No.
Because?
Because it's, I mean, it's, I don't know if we need to kill it yet.
Probably have to wait for the, wait for the bike boat to see what happens there.
Yeah, and then, um, and the one that's in public safety is different.
It's a Plan B.
It's, that's an outright ban.
So is this pending ours?
I don't know if it's pending ours.
Like, do we need to have both going simultaneously? It seems confusing, cause clearly, I'm confused.
So, the one that we have-
Yes.
Would set parameters and would-
That if we allowed one, but we're already saying we're not allowing it?
On the bike path.
This is on streets.
This would be other than the bike path.
Okay.
So like, um, so say that, uh, you know, this street gets closed down for a special event and this guy wants to come in and get a permit. He would submit his route and there would be parameters around what he would have to do.
So that's still an open thing we can talk about?
Yes.
Okay, then what is, okay.
The other one is just outright.
It's outright ban.
Outright restriction.
Which one is it?
The one that's in public safety.
Go ahead, you have-
And, I don't know, I mean, he's part of the committee too. But, um, we didn't start the discussion of it until this committee finished with those ones. So that way, we, like you said, we don't wanna do a double one.
Okay.
Do with two different ordinance, they talk about the same thing. So we receive it as a committee, but we're not gonna do anything until you guys finish it.
Okay, so yours is just sitting there.
For now.
Until we resolve our, uh, what are we calling it?
That's what we decide.
Cycle of-
And that's what we decide as a committee until-
So if we, so, question. So if we come up with a fabulous ordinance that is just rock solid and waterproof, this goes away?
It could.
Okay.
And I think like the parameters around that would be, like, what could potentially be a, a potential use for this in East Hampton. You know, is, is there any, you know, is there a route that it could take? Is there an opportunity for special events where it could be used or something, something like that? Um, and if not, then we say no to that and we release that. And then we go to that, which would be looking at, well, then we, there's just no, absolute, absolutely no space for this whatsoever banned.
So, okay, so this, what we're talking about is potentially allowing it? Plan B is it's absolutely not gonna happen? Why wouldn't that be here as well?
I mean, it is an ordinance.
If we say we're not gonna do it, wouldn't that de facto mean that this is the answer? Like if we can't do an ordinance that allows it in some, you know, that we can all agree on as parameters, doesn't that make this then a rule?
Anyway, I mean, it's an ordinance, so-
I know, how did it get open?
Because if you, because it was more of a public safety consideration, that was my thought. If you look at the, like, the preamble.
Again, as a committee, what we decide-
No, I hear.
Was, no, no, and now to your answer, why, why it's not here and it's why he said it probably is gonna end here. Is that if we decide to take a look open, we're gonna make a recommendation as a, as a public safety committee. And the recommendation is gonna be to you guys, because you guys are the ordinance committee. We're gonna take a look, because it's a public safety issue, and then we're gonna send it to the ordinance committee with the recommendation of the public safety.
That was the same reason like the outdoor events thing was sent to public safety, cause it's a public safety concern and potentially. Although I think any committee can pass an ordinance, no?
Um, no, any, yeah, I mean, generally there's, you know, for, historically, we've given, uh, the pay scale to finance. The pay, you know, the, uh-
Pay plan.
Pay plan ordinance. Um, but, you know, and I would also say historically ordinance has dealt with issues that deal with public safety as well. So, I mean, it's kind of, uh, it, 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 at the end of the day, I mean, the, where we send things is up to the discretion of the council, um, and there's no hard and fast rule necessarily. Um, but I think generally like ordinances will probably, you know, from public safety, will probably end up back in ordinance, I think, with a recommendation. I mean, that seems like it would be a normal course of, um, protocol.
And that's how I see it.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So. Did I answer your question? But you remember, you remember the quadricycle ordinance that we did, right? With all the, like, the parameters?
Which is thus my confusion.
Well, cause we had all, cause we had talked, I think, I think it was like three meetings ago about having a restriction as a solution if we decided, basically if you vote no on an ordinance, you still don't have to go restrict it.
Yeah, because otherwise it's still open. It's kind of undefined.
We either have to allow them or not allow them.
Right.
And I'm with you.
Okay.
I just am not completely clear on why it's two different things, but I will let it go.
And that part, I wasn't, I wasn't, when those got sent, I wasn't there.
My thought, my thought is the person who submitted it was that the, the restriction, the, the lens for restriction had more to do with a public safety concern than just straight out evaluating like an ordinance like A, B, C, you know, blah, blah, blah. But the time, place matter. So, and, and that was, that was, yeah, oh, sorry, it's all, it's all the same.
Come on.
And just to add, um, I think it's, it's a good idea that I know if it is an ordinance that is related to public safety or is related to rules or something like that, I think it's a good idea to send it to that committee and the committee's the recommendation to this committee.
Mm-hmm.
I, I think that practice, I think is a good idea.
Yeah.
Is a more people-
More eyes on it.
More out there.
Yep.
And a different perspective about the committee, and at the end, we'll end here.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so I have about five more. Sorry, my pumpkin is turning into a chariot.
Oh.
Just kidding, it is usually the other way around, but I have to leave at six.
So-
It's really the upshot of all of it. Okay.
So just to summarize, um, again, we're ready for some language with the rage stuff.
Yep.
I'll clean up some of the language in the cannabis stuff and then we're kinda waiting for a little bit, but some of it just needs to be cleaned up. Do you agree, can I make a motion to, um, change, sorry, um, sorry, I'm trying to find where I was. I stopped, my, my, uh, my cat, uh, yeah, uh, instead of, um, to change the, um, sorry, I'm trying to find where, where I was. Uh, the six-month thing, I was looking for where that was.
Uh, it's something, uh, four point seven?
Are we back to equity?
Oh, it's, yeah, it's seven point four point three. So it's seven point four point three, instead of, um, uh, where it reads, any special permit granted to any equity applicant shall lapse if the applicant has not submitted a completed application. And he added these, these little words, for retail license to commission within six months. Can we, can I make a motion to change that to a year instead? Is that more reasonable?
I think so.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we can change that. And, uh-
Change city clerk to planning, or plan the planner?
I think we should change city clerk to, to plan.
Okay, so-
Make a motion to change city clerk under seven point four point three to planning, uh, department.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Clerk's to, you heard.
Um, on the agenda, it has our next meeting as September twenty-fifth. I will not be here.
Okay, well, how about this? Um, let's, uh, on the eighteenth, um, I can announce a different date, if you have one that works for you, that's better.
Uh, that entire week I'm unavailable.
Okay, so let's, you wanna just, just move on to the-
This Tuesday before the next thing.
Which is the, the first?
We could, we could do the first. I have a dentist.
So my only question about that, my only question about that, okay, so, so the city council meets on the eighteenth. Wait, do you say the twenty, you mean the twenty-fourth?
Well, it says the twenty-fifth on the agenda.
Which is a Wednesday. Yeah, it should be the twenty-fourth. So my only question about that though is the twenty-fourth would be an opportunity to hopefully-
Not here.
No, I understand that. Um, so the twenty-fourth though might, would be an opportunity to, um, have some of that language from wage that's been cannabis finalized.
Okay, I mean, if we can keep it and we can look at that, but, um, I don't know if we wanna do that without pay.
I, I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying I do, I'm just putting that out there.
Okay, um, let's-
When, so when will you be back?
Um, there's, I've got one.
Third, um, you wanna do, well, that might be-
I actually-
The twenty-sixth.
No, the twenty-
So, but, so when, cause we'd have to give Barbara language, so, right?
Yeah. So. I could do Monday.
The thirtieth?
Twenty-third.
Oh, the twenty-third, but you're not-
Oh, but you're gone, the twenty-third.
I'm not here either, actually.
Twenty-third, twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth.
Okay. Um.
I currently don't have anything on the twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, okay, do, I can move it to the twenty-sixth. Are you good on the twenty-sixth?
I'm fine with that. So my question with that would be, if we agreed on language, does that make it to, is that enough time?
To get on, to get on that.
Joe could add it to the-
Yeah, Joe could add it.
Okay.
If we, if we finalized it Thursday night, Joe could have them amend the package on Friday.
Okay.
Well.
Maybe we could ask him to.
Nobody's here Friday.
Oh, true.
Monday.
Monday.
So that would work?
Okay, so I just changed it.
You might, I mean, you might wanna just send him a-
I'll send him a heads-up.
Thing and say-
You think that's gonna be okay with Barbara?